And don't ask for any of mine either.
What does that say?
Auto start disabled this event, click go live to start your broadcast. Show again. We hit go live?
According to Kefalgar.
We don't have to hit go live?
Yep.
It did. It's lit up.
The big son. What he talks about, but. Yeah. That was better. Really. I mean it's. Nah. Yeah.
He's a great kid. I hear someone.
Yeah. He is, he is.
Where do you go? Have you?
I can't get on the.
Neither can I.
Do I need to hit go or did you already?
Already did.
Awesome.
You have to fill in the mental section here, sorry. You're just lucky.
Yeah. We'll give you a long. Thorn between roses.
Which wireless network are you on Tim?
Well, I was on public.
That's it, that's what I'm on, I can't get to it.
Now I'm getting admin privileges here.
Oh fancy.
I mean, nobody else can get on the website?
Not if they're on the else, it's public.
Uh, it's not a public forever.
I'll try.
Well, I hope this young one gets personal good.
Whenever I come in here, I'll try to.
You make it go to your.
Yep. Go to your cash, one of the other. That's that's. They can handle.
Well, while he's in that, we can go ahead and start with.
Yep.
Well, I've got you, you got.
Your cash.
Couple of young men in the north, gonna help us out with this.
Behind you. Alright, we're gonna play it, get it started.
Let the leaders sit on the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Well done. Yeah. The public one doesn't.
Okay.
Alright. All of the course are present this evening, so. For the recognition of your suits, yep. Look like a good crowd here, so I'm assuming they got some people listening.
Our first one, and I think was last month, but not able to join, so he's Bianca Hernandez. So moving to Cody Pullman. A little information about this, um, there's a lot of students in our schools that just do their job, um, are good people. They do things for other people, uh, they kind of live up to those ideas that we really have around our king's motto. And don't really get any recognition for it, other than just doing their job. And so really as a board, wanted to recognize these students for what they do on a daily basis. So, um, when they get nominated, there's always kind of a write-up. So can I read about you Cody and what they said? Said Cody was nominated by Mrs. Bauer. He shows amazing self-control in all situations and is always working to better himself. Mrs. Bauer wrote that he is one of the kindest people she knows and is always willing to lift a hand to those in need. Cody's passion for learning along with his trustworthy and honest attitude will help him succeed in whatever he chooses. So Cody, congratulations.
Hey Cody, one question. Tell me about that buckle. I want to say, you don't want to tell them. I don't know, it's like talking about your buck. Alright, you can.
Got it. Don't worry.
For showing cattle?
What?
Tell me, tell me what kind of pig you're doing.
What's it really for? It was for.
Showmanship.
Sweet steaks.
Oh, sweet steaks, that's right.
He was the high exhibitor all around.
Nice, I like that buckle, that's awesome. Alright. Didn't know you were gonna be put on the spot. I didn't sign up for this.
Yeah.
Next up, Rayleigh Gillen. Doing well, okay? Rayleigh was nominated by several of her teachers who all spoke highly of her work ethic and overall character. Mr. McDonald schooled her both stated she is a joy to have in the classroom and is always giving a hundred percent in all that she does. Mr. Ronberg appreciated her leadership and willingness to help others. While Mr. Miley spoke of her tenacity in working through different difficult problems in the class while being a great role model to others. So congratulations for your hard work. Definitely tells us a lot. Any questions?
Yes, what's your favorite class?
Uh, Mr. Miley's.
And teach what, what does it? Like man, that's awesome. Good job, congratulations.
Our last is Alan here. Did well. Alan was nominated by Mr. Boyd for showing outstanding character. He is a very hardworking student and not afraid to seek help and ask questions on difficult concepts. I did that a lot in high school, lots of difficult concepts. Alan goes out of his way to be kind and always had the positive attitude. Mr. Porter wrote that always comes to class with a smile and treats everyone with respect. He would greatly missed in class after graduation. Graduation.
Uh, yeah, I'm planning on the vault state for needs education.
Awesome.
Well done.
So to say one last round of applause, I think these are, these are the kind of students that, uh, are an example to really both wants. As Louis Cass case, so. You gotta do what you do every time. We'll stand over here, maybe we can get the ground in the background.
I know.
How do you guys fuck him over here?
That's when they get the king back. Better be able to get the king, cause they moved.
Good job all of you, well done.
Only the king that drops from the.
I kinda like watching. As well, I think it's kind of fun.
So thank you all for coming, thank you for being the king tomorrow, being good role models and good students and everything. You are free to go at this point, because it gets.
Or you can stay.
So you're more than welcome to go. It's more, don't go, or stay, it's totally up to you.
But to your chubs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
Alright, that's cool. Alright, at this time, I open it up for any public comments, anything that's on this agenda. Well, I'll take that as there are no comments, so we will move on to the superintendent's report, so.
Okay. We've got a full agenda, nice, I only have a couple of things. One thing that, um, I would like to see if I can add to the agenda is we have quotes for, um, the work that needs to be done in the kitchen, uh, over the summer. So we received two quotes for that. I would like to add that too, as we move forward. I put in a strategic planning update for you guys, so there's a draft of the plan. Built out in the plan, there's the October essentially first benchmark for those plans, uh, kind of the work that's gonna be done. Again, this is kind of an ever-evolving tool. I've just linked basically the whole folder, because also in there, um, the district improvement team, when they met, they did a SWAT activity. I don't know if you're familiar with those or not, but strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Hopefully you got a chance to kind of go through those, it kind of gives you some thoughts on what they were thinking as they were moving through that. And then as a working group, they really dove in and started working especially heavily on the student side of it as far as that goes. The one piece that's not in here yet, but will be following very soon, um, Nicole Nelson has done a lot of work with taking a look at area schools around us. And what their performance levels are on a very high level, and so we're gonna have kind of a dashboard built out on that. So that we can kind of see how do we compare to the schools that are around us. And then that can be, uh, kind of motivation for as we move forward and really to start working, um, towards this strategic plan. So again, this is a living document, it's gonna keep going from here. The main thing is I wanted to get the skeletal structure of it in place to begin to present for the beginning of the school year and really guide our work as we go through. And I will just say, uh, I appreciate the administrators and the teachers and staff members that joined us in that district improvement team, um, to work through on that morning. Uh, got a lot done and a lot accomplished, and, uh, it's a very compressed timeframe compared to what happened. This would be a year-long process that we're sweeping into a very short time window, so appreciate their work. Any questions or anything, or any, anything you guys need? Um, the next piece that we have is a mall design group. We've been looking to partner possibly with their group to, um, really take a look at, uh, say branding, but also just a look at like overall. The aesthetics of the district, but then the meat and potatoes too of, um, signage and really working to make sure that people know. The different distinct parts of the district, and then how can we, uh, take the, essentially the assets which we have, which we have quality older buildings. But you know, as you go over time, really kind of applying our brand to them and making sure that they're modern, they're updated. And really kind of, I think something that the kids can be really proud of, uh, when they're walking into school, so. Um, he has come and done a couple walkthroughs for us, and he's actually here in the audience, if you guys have any questions. I will just ask, how many schools have you guys worked with to this point, or do you have like an estimation?
We've worked between fifteen and twenty school districts that we've worked with or school corporations, mostly all within the state of Indiana. Uh, we're, we're located, um, on the other side of the state, Muncie, uh, but we find ourselves in pockets as we do a school and we help them rejuvenate. Kind of heighten that school spirit, like in, uh, do some of the work that we do. You know, other schools, you know, they recommend this and, um, we find ourselves in pockets doing, you know, a couple of schools and a, and a conference or something, so. Um, but the last ten years, we've pretty much solely, uh, did play on that, but we went down the path of just working with the school systems and really partnered and it's been a really pleasant. Uh, transition for us, but now that's about ninety-five percent of our business is just working with schools, doing the same thing, also this one. Just brain management all the way down to lay it that way, finding information, just, you know, taking your buildings, it's an older building to rejuvenate it. Getting the kids excited, you know, get us guys some new kids here, you know, um, some, some graphics and stuff that we can all.
Part of what we looked at with this is all of us know where the band doors are, or what we call the band doors, but my senior doesn't call them the band doors, or we call them the wait room doors, or how it gets the fool. If you're not from around here, you have no idea what door to go in and find and stuff, but we need to make that more user friendly. And that's what we're, we're mainly aiming for is to, with somebody from Tri-Cheek to come here, wants to go to the high school gymnasium, they know where to park, and now we can have better signage for that.
If you're the pioneer, they need to pioneer, right?
We did, yes. We got a lot of work over there.
I do want to make sure we're gonna keep our big beautiful crown, but we say branding, we're not talking about changing that, right?
You know, we, we try to take a lot of extra time at the front, um, to gather some, uh, school heritage, you know, what you guys have. And, you know, we'll make some minor adjustments to some things, but once again, that's with a lot of input from both faculty and the community before we start getting crazy. We don't just go throw out a whole new idea, we're not gonna change anything like that, but we're just gonna. Your guys' building and campus is really, really clean and it's nice, and it's just ready for that extra pop, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, but. I'm originally from the. Just working recently. We're doing the, in the area and then pioneer. Uh, like a month ago, started to find ourselves a pocket, but once again, you know, even though we've done schools in the area. We usually get recommended, you know, from superintendents, athletic directors and whatnot, but I do try to create, and we're not cookie cutter, so we'll come in here and try to do something cool and nice for your students. It's different still from the other schools, so, um, so there's, it's a learning process, that's the first phase, is us just trying to gather everybody.
They say we're open to just about any kind of ideas, lots of looks like that.
I've learned a little bit already.
Put it away.
I think you said you're going through a mascot change someplace right now, and it's been an interesting process.
Well, in Peru, we're going through, they had a cease and desist on their logos, we had to make that change, or there wasn't an option there, so. Um, so we've kind of taken that opportunity and we'll take it to the next level, but. I've seen a lot of other schools go through that process, I've been involved with, now, all of our stuff has been very success, successful and, um, you know, well received, but. I've seen other, other schools, um, some procedure schools, they just went through and I wasn't involved with them, but they, they, uh, I feel like they, the community got up in arms. They start putting little big logos on water towers, you know, it's, we got some of that on the other side of the state, so that, uh. But my wife always asks me, you don't do that school, you guys, I said, no. But in general, you always say, we, we try to gather a lot from you guys before we get moving, but, um, but you, you gotta have a lot of opportunity, so I think we can do some of that stuff. And so we're ready to go with the second base.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Take action on it.
Take action.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, that's all I have for now.
Alright, that's correct.
Here's our monthly bank fund balance report, this, um, is printed out after all of the bank accounts are reconciled. So here are the, um, the current balances that are in all of the bank accounts. And then here's the monthly report for our expenses, here's our revenue in education. Uh, the April fund balance was a million six ninety-one, one twenty-nine. Our total expenses, our total, uh, revenue was eight eighty-three, nine eighty-nine, forty-five. And then our expenditures for the month were eight forty-four, seven seventy-three, oh five. Operations fund, the balance was two million thirty-four thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. Our revenue was one fifty-four, seven fifty-seven. And our expenditures were three forty-six, seven seventy-eight. Any questions?
Yes, biggest thing I have, since we don't have good forecast, is are we staying in line with where we're.
Yes, and you can, whenever. You can see that through the, um, appropriation report. So on the appropriation report, all of the, from each line to each fund. They are all in that appropriation report.
That's a lot of math for me to do right there, I'm just looking for a big picture.
Yeah, you can look at the very bottom, and it'll have the percentages on there.
So we're at thirty-three percent.
Okay.
Grand total of all.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Can you put a fu, a total in there by funds, rather than just the grand total percent? I mean, like break that by funds, you think?
On which report?
On the appropriation report, like, you, cause I could show them the thirty-three percent, but that's like all of the.
All funds.
And all that, it's not showing education, like the, the one that he set up originally was like education.
Let me see, I'm, I'm, I bet I can, but let me double check, because I don't want to say that I can do that.
It's kind of like to see if we're staying in line with what our budget was, and I could look at the thirty-three percent, but like Christie said, it's, it's combining all of the funds.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure that education's in line, ops is in line, and.
So let me see if I can run just an education forecast report, and then the operations forecast report.
That's.
See if that's, um, one of the reports that's in there, if not, I'll ask, and maybe they can help me build it.
Thank you.
I had a question, I don't know, it's not necessarily something I want answers on today, but, uh, back about a year ago, we were starting to look at the grant. But balances and like some of them are positive, some of them are, haven't had any activity, like that one summer of learning grant, that's negative sixty-five thousand and it turned twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Or are we not gonna get that, are you like, sort of a, a, a update on where we're at on the grants?
So what I found out about that was, is those are through the digital learning, which are the David C Ford. And so whenever those come in on the digital learning, it's the thirty-nine, fifty-seven, fifty-nine, sixty and sixty-one, I believe. So those, when they come in, they're spent out of that fund, but they have to be reseeded into the education fund.
So when will it not be negative then?
Well.
I just, we've had, we've, if you look, what, what brought it up in my, when I was looking at the fund reports, was there's lots in the year-to-date column here through, for four months, that has zero activity in revenue, zero activity expenditure. So in four months, there's been nothing, go through it, some of those are negative, some of those are really far positive. If you could just like go through and, you know, just sort of a general update on all the grants, like, you know, that are, that are sitting there. Is that an old grant? Cause I, I know some of those are predated me in twenty-eighteen, and there's still no, no activity, so just an update on where we're at on getting those.
Many of them that are on there.
Mm-hmm.
Like you said, have been on there for years upon years. And so in order, and then the summer of learning, and then the David C Ford grants, like I said, those are negative because they have to be reseeded into the.
Supportive accounts say to do. Cause I can't imagine that, cause you'll get, you'll get written up for having an A.
Well, on the grant funds that are reimbursable, as long as I have a report that shows that here are the expenses, here's what I, um. Applied for, for reimbursement, and those match.
But it'll just be on there forever.
Right.
So that doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Can't zero it out, because it.
To be away.
It, well, the only way to do it is to move money from the education into that fund.
Well, if you can show where we put the money in there.
Well, I can't move money out of education, because I can't transfer it, I can't transfer it to a grant. I've not done that, so I'm not familiar with that process.
I'm, it just doesn't give us a really obvious, true balance in, in the grants.
Well, and all the federal grant funds are gonna be negative, because they're always at least thirty days.
One's got two hundred and some thousand in it.
Well, but it, and that's because whenever it converted, whenever we converted, that was the balance in there. But. Mu, many of those are, like you said, from like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, they are years old.
Well, this one's twenty-three, twenty-four, that has the two hundred and sixty-one. It's the fifty-two, twenty-four, spec ed parat training, twenty-three, twenty-four. This year it's had ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars in expenditures, the current balance is two hundred and sixty-one thousand.
That's true, because that one we, that one isn't reimbursable, that's one that we get the dollar amount and we get all of that.
So, but it had two hundred and seventy, like what is that for? When, what? I, I'm not saying that they're all negative, I'm saying, what are those grants? What are we gonna do with that? That's two hundred and seventy dollars that we've only spent ten thousand and four, in four months, what are we doing with that? What's that going towards? Does it have a purpose? I mean, you know, I'm sure it did.
I'm sure it does.
Well, could we get an update, maybe next meeting sometime between now and then of what, what those are?
Yeah.
No? Well, I know it's budget season, but we, like a year now, we've been.
But some of them, like I said, they are older to where I, I don't even know who's in charge of some of those grants. And who was in charge of some of those grants are no longer here. And so because like, like Nicole does digital learning, so she, and she also does high ability. So I know that she'll track them, so, but some of those.
I get what you're saying, cause I did it, I understand, but we've gotta get a handle on them, cause there's, I mean, there's money that's sitting there that we don't have a purpose for, or we could be putting it to a purpose. And it's just sitting there. I know there's several of the preschool ones that are just sitting there that were there when I was here, and we haven't done anything with them. I'm not asking for answers, I'm just, uh, if you could start thinking about that, it's been about a year and I've tried to, like, not say anything. Cause I know we've been in transition and all that, but as we're getting a little bit further away, if you could maybe try to start looking at that.
I will, and I'll give you as much information as I can get.
Okay. Thank you.
I saw it. Kids and base are a sport.
Pretty impressive, have all the teaching positions, Bill.
Yeah, I think so too.
That's nice. Good question. Are we gonna introduce teachers before we go through the consent agenda?
We have a queen here.
That's what we, I think we need to, at least.
You wanna do that when we get to?
Yes, absolutely, sorry, didn't mean to jump ahead. We should do that before. Yes, correct. She can do what she does. They can do that. Are we ready for that?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I have Frankie, for those of you who don't know Frankie, she is our school dog, and it's hot in the car, and she is not, uh. Going to stay, and we haven't been home yet. So this was our, my opportunity to bring her to, you could do the full presentation for me. Um, I told Nicole, I am so excited about this, we've been working on this, um, so I, you know, promised to keep it forty-five minutes or less. No, truly, this should be pretty quick, I hope to explain, stop me, I really am super excited. I told someone today, I would invite the whole school to come and share, because I would hope, um, there would be pockets of people throughout our whole school who know about the things that we're gonna share about.
You don't want blood, this is bad.
Don't tease me like that.
Thanks, go back.
Good to come back.
I literally just did this.
I think it's. Snowbird, where'd you go?
Okay.
Don't move.
Don't move. This really is an awkward silence, we're off.
That's really strange, cause we just had, oh, okay. I'm gonna leave her there, I promise she won't. She'll stay, she'll stay, she's used to going around.
Not supposed to move there. We're good.
No matter.
We'll do a hammer at it, that's alright, go back here, Frankie, yeah.
Okay. We can actually thank Nicole Nelson for the templates I, I, um, was sharing with her, like, I've got the information. I just don't want to recreate the wheel, she goes, oh, I can cover this for you. So we're gonna give you the highlights of our year and, um, share a little bit about where we're going. Feel free to stop me, like I said. So we're gonna start our mental health team, we have three people on our mental health, they gave me so much information, I wanted to consolidate it to one page. But our three, um, staff that are part of the mental health team have worked with a hundred and five identified students. Uh, we have kids on watch, those students are, are you going in there?
It's all good.
We're good. Um, those students are in a mix of individual therapy, sometimes just individual sessions. They are, um, students who are in groups, these are all of our different types of groups that we have, actually, they're not all of them, there are so many more. These are just a smattering of our groups, and as you can see at the bottom, five hundred or more, um, assists with administrative support. So when I was part of the interview team, and anyone who would ask, why Louis Cass? Why would, why would I want to work here? Um, I let the staff share all of their ideas, and I always shared because of our mental health team. We have three people who support our kids. Um, this is my twenty-fifth year of education and my first building to have this type of support. Where you are bringing staff to help students as a whole student and not just a disciplinary situation. So we should be really proud of that.
What are those three? What are those three staff members? What are those three staff members?
Who are they or what do they do?
Yeah, both, their names and their titles.
Yep, Jessica Houston, social worker. Um, we have Melissa Johnson, student services, and we have Megan Bullard, she was new this year, another social worker. So here are some things about our PBIS, behavior support, you can take a look, we've done all sorts of things um, related to supporting kids with positive support. It's really important, I feel like there's so much on the backend that happens to, um, take care of discipline. But there are things that have happened in class lessons. Um, every classroom, our mental health team comes in and helps support those kids through very structured lessons for kids to help support their needs. And we've done, uh, lots of things to recognize good behavior. There are several things that are still coming up. Um, Melissa just sent an email today about the end of the year, like our big event, and we have, oops, we have a, um, a couple incentives that are still happening in the next couple of days to recognize grade levels for good behavior. So, um, just a lot to celebrate in our building for positive supports. So I also wanted to share with.
Oh, oh, sorry.
It's okay, I'm ready.
Oh, okay.
No, we're good, we're good. We're good. Um, this is our clinic for, and since we have a corporation nurse here, she shared the clinic numbers that go to see the nurse, I'm not sure if anyone's aware, but you know, I just decided to put this in, cause I think this is important, look at our number, um, over eight thousand visits from students that are nurses support. But I think.
To this school year, eight thousand? Gee whiz.
That's just me.
Yeah.
John doesn't sit down.
Yeah, I bet not.
Brandon doesn't sit down.
So, um, this is incredible, and I just wanted all, the entire building to be, or entire corporation to be noticed here. So, um, earlier, Dr. Dotree, uh, he shared about the district team that we're having. And these were the goals, I put them in, you know, I'm an elementary person, I put this in sort of my elementary ease. And I want you to know that we know that as a, as a district, a school board, an administrative team, and now our, our teacher leaders, we're all aware of the goals that we have, and I think that's very exciting. So these were the three areas of the goals, um, academic programming, graduation pathways, and student engagement and achievement. So I wanna show you how we have worked, been working in our building, um, related to those goals. This is our, our school improvement, excuse me, our leadership team. Um, each person here volunteered to be a part of it, and they represent all the different areas of our, of our, um, building, there are twelve leaders, and they have met consistently to go over the different goals that we've had this year. And this was a model, I don't wanna belabor it, but I want you to know that when I came in in August, I knew that we needed some support in some academic areas. So we used this model, um, if you go to the next slide. And here was how we wrote it out and mapped the needs for this coming year. We recognized we didn't have an active MTSS team that was working, um, that was working in a way to support kids, their mental health, their behavior and their academic success. We, we did not have that. We recognized we didn't have a writing curriculum, we had some outdated, um, curriculum that we're using, we're trying to support that. So we are, we are working through this. And the goal would be that you're always over here monitoring and evaluating annually, and you go back and you start again. And so that's, that's how we wrote this up, um, back in August. Can you keep going? Sorry, I'm gonna move back here, so you guys can see. So, right now, here in May, these are some highlights that we're working on. Our staff on the last day will get a version of this. Our leadership team has decided we needed a writing curriculum, we adopted it this year. We focused on math computation because our I-Learn scores were really poor in this area. We created an MTSS team, um, that's evolving. Melissa did a lot of the hard work, the forefront of that, getting us prepared for it. We created a discipline matrix, so think of like a bingo sheet. If these things happen, this is the, this is the consequence that will occur, that will be launched into next year. So we're waiting for the next administrator to come in and be part of that. So, um, again, coming into this summer, these are things that we're working on, we created a literacy framework that our staff will find out about in a couple of weeks. We have summer school for first time for second and third graders, we've had it for third in the past. We're inviting second graders this year, we have to by state law. So they will be coming, we'll have a full-time math interventionist next year, it's, we have the funds for it, it's through Title I. We didn't have that person, but we're gonna allocate funds to prioritize math as a concern. And, um, we have been working hard on this new teacher mentor program. We have six new teachers coming into our building, and we want them to feel welcome, we want them to feel supported, we want them to stay. So we are working on ways to continually, um, keep in, in touch with them and to grow them professionally next year. So this, we can, we can go through pretty quickly. I want you to see that we are developing things like literacy framework this coming year. We're going to train, um, some of our staff to do what's called tier-two interventions. It means a classroom teacher has worked her tail off. Now we're gonna bring in additional support that come in and give them, uh, their kids, an additional round of support. Because the classroom teacher just cannot, they have to move on and they have to, they have to do additional things. So that's here, we're gonna draft a, a math framework by the end of the year, along with a writing framework. Why the framework? Because when you consistently go into every fourth grade class, you're going to see similar instructional strategies, similar curriculum being used. Uh, and, um, we want to come up with that together and be consistent with what we do. So this will continue, as you see, it's really basic in elementary, you're gonna focus on literacy, you're gonna focus on writing, math, and supporting the MTSS, um, is the team that supports the whole kid. And so we wanna continue to grow that, if you continue to go on, um, we will focus on these. So notice how I'm saying draft year one, year two each year, because I want us to be intentional, that we are moving from a draft year. We are moving from year one of implementation to a year two. We'll go back through that model of, um, how, what are our needs, how do we assess it? What are the things we're doing to meet those needs and how do we monitor and evaluate? So that will happen consistently throughout the, the year from May, uh, or excuse me, from August to May. And this was the plan we used to start with. We created this, and then I tried to break it up a little bit and show you year to year what we're doing, so. That was quick. Any questions?
One comment, two questions before everybody else goes. So, if I'm understanding this math right, that's a kid every eight minutes into nursing office, is that right?
I'm on the nursing.
Is that normal, eight thousand, hundred and eighty days, seven and a half hours a day? Man, that's crazy.
I'll tell you, Ryan, I stopped in there before and, and there was like six kids in there all at once.
You were just getting them suckers or something?
Hold up, no, they weren't.
She just wasn't so nice.
Okay, so on, back on the mental health thing, when you first, first started, is, um, obviously it's not our world, or definitely not my world. Is, what, what do you see as one of the biggest issues? Is it, is it home life, is it, is it students, just being students and bullying and being rough, or what is one of the bigger red flags that you're seeing this year?
I will definitely say that the trauma experiences of a student, where they, what they have come from to get to our school is such a big impact on, on them. Um, you know, we're expecting such, such big things academically from students, and they're coming in with, you know, a lot, a variety of, of problems. In my, in my guess, Melissa, you could probably speak to this better. I think so much of it is what happens outside of school is our reason for that support. Our ladies are never without a job to do, never ever, supporting in lots of ways. And, you know, in one way, I saw one of them go in for a teacher, let the teacher leave, who was just like to her wit's end to give her a few minutes, because she was looking out for the teacher too. Because it was a rough class, and I, I just appreciate that, there's, there's, there's the coming around of student and staff. But it really has a lot to do with student concerns, student issues. John, would you agree with that too? Yeah.
The lowest hanging fruit, I appreciate your outline and the model, uh, obviously there's improvement for all of us, including the board to make. But what do you see as your lowest hanging fruit that within one year, you can really move the needle on? Is it, is it reading? Right, okay.
And Ryan, that was why we, we chose it this year. We had no students in third grade to pass the writing portion of the I-Learn last year, unacceptable.
And so what, what's different to make you think you can move this needle in a bigger way?
Good, very good question. We spent a lot of time researching good writing models. Who was finding success using those writing models? And, um, there were several people who were willing to do the research, not just, oh, I'm gonna flip open a curriculum book, listen to a podcast, watch videos, uh, join literacy groups, um, including myself. We spent months researching one and came up with it, and very quickly, Dr. Dotree, within like three days of being hot, I mean, in the position, I shared, I would love to ask for four thousand dollars right now so we can train, I was just, I remember it, and he said, let's do it. Gave him the data, let's do it. So that's our low hanging fruit, that's gonna push the needle on the ELA, the, um, English Language Arts I-Learn scores. Um, something else that we've done is very, very intense, um, tier-two remediations, which is just, you know, again, coming in and supporting what the classrooms already had this last quarter. We had thirty-three kids not pass the I-R-E-D in March, that means thirty-three would be held back and be third graders again. That's alarming. So we revamped our third, our fourth quarter, um, changed all four of the third grade teachers, did something different. Re, re, um, restructured, brought in several more supports, and then, uh, I'm really, this is not official, but, uh, uh, the students that have like reported back, fifteen of those thirty-three have passed because they're not finished with the I-R-E-D. So we have only one, one right now that we would be holding back. Um, that's a really big deal, and that's a student we would want to hold back.
Mm-hmm.
So it just feels good that we are being very intentional, and I say we, it is not me. We got a staff of people willing to do it, so really grateful for it.
So was that, was that, uh, restructuring remediation time, or how, how did you?
So we restructured the actual reading time, so they have ninety minutes. Students who did not pass, we put them in a group together, and we just really focused on those skills that are needed for that assessment. And then we put in two additional staff members, so they had three teachers and one, well, well, three staff to help, one teacher, two aides. And then each of those students had an additional, um, small group. So they got additional help plus very, very intentional per quarter, and I'm just tickled, I'm about it.
Can you remind the MTSS?
Yeah, it's a tiered system of supports.
Okay.
So it is, um, something that's national, and there's a lot of information on it, the IDOE really supports this model. It used to be RTI, RTI was, uh, I'm not sure what the acronym meant, Response to Intervention. But now it's looking at, it, we're really trying to look at a whole kid. They're not looking at just the academics or the behavior, they're looking at the mental health of the child too. And so that team comes together and you have the different, um, different members with different specialties that come as staff. We review data all the time, we're prepared, a teacher comes in, they present a student that they have a concern about, and then we as a team come up with a plan. To, we're trying to keep kids from failing, falling through the cracks.
So the teacher brings this, the, the student to your attention?
Yes, and we give them criteria that, so they know who to identify. And then they bring that student to us, and then, um, we come back to that after we've worked on a plan, we implement it, come back for review.
How many kids do you have identified for MTSS support?
I don't know that. Do you know that Lisa? It's, um, I don't know, I would say thirty-five, forty right now? Probably.
And that's independent of like the hundred and five kids that are being seen by the mental health?
Yes, absolutely. If it might be included, it might be included, um, they could be some of the same students, but they, that doesn't mean all thirty-five were also seen by mental health staff. Really, I, if you ever wanna talk to me about it outside of today, I would be happy.
And the staff hasn't seen this, I mean, so this is a good, like, what's the buy-in been? Have they, do they know about it other than the people, the twelve people?
Yes, well, I say that, we meet in teams because we don't have a common planning period for the whole, for the whole school. Um, so in our pockets of teams, they're aware of this.
Okay.
But that's just general classroom teachers, that's why we have to wait till the last day. That's the only, I mean, we haven't met since early this year.
But the general topics of concern and stuff, they're all bought in, that those are the things we need to.
I, I mean, I would say them, ask the.
I've talked to someone, and they said that you had said you were gonna do it on the last day, the specifics of it. And I just didn't know, what do they know, or has it just been the twelve really doing it?
That we were focusing on writing and math computation for the whole year. And then the, the team, the leadership team created the three-year goals to, to launch, to present. Because I needed a year to get to know this in our building.
Oh, I, absolutely, I totally get that, I just didn't know what involvement there was of the outside of those twelve people.
Yes. Um, and that's typically how a school leadership team works, they come up with those things, and then they present them to their individual teams.
They talk to their teams, that's all, I, I just thought, I wanted to know if they had done that.
I'm gonna apologize for leaving, my senior, um, has a baseball game against their rival.
Oh.
And so.
Better get out of here.
I know. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Could you share this? Could you share this with?
Could you spend two minutes and introduce your teachers before you leave, while you still on the floor?
I have, we have Kristi Bergen, if you'd stand up. Um, but we are beyond excited to have her, she is coming with, is it twelve years?
Ten.
Ten years of experience. Um, she is licensed in English language, she is going to immediately be a leader in our building. Um, and in a crucial area, which is third grade, I mean, that's the year that they, if they don't pass test, that they will. And she is, she is just dynamite, um, great, uh, recommendations from her, you know, anyone I called about her, and she's, she's from our area.
Okay, you look for me.
Yeah. Her leg, yes.
Get back to making.
Yes, so we are, we are, yeah, bunk of ours, our district. We got home.
That's right.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
I hope you don't get it back.
That was the only one out of the tier.
Yeah. I'm like Kristi Bergen.
Alright, thank you again, be careful.
Absolutely, I'll share.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing the dogs. Miss Young, you're up.
Thank you.
You're on to Raj.
I didn't bring a dog, I just brought my two calendars with me. Hopefully they'll be as entertaining.
Well, I remember one being fifty-six.
Okay, um, appreciate you having us in tonight and sharing a little bit about our school this year. The school year's been really good, and obviously we're down to about eight days of school left, and so things are flying by really quick. But we had a lot of turnover at the school, and, and what I mean by turnover, not so much with the teaching staff, but over the course of time, we've had administrators come and go. And, uh, some of the things that I, I, I took, I don't know, I, I've, I've thought about, and, and I've. And some of the things that I, I took, I don't know, I, I've thought about and, and I've taken a little self-reflection on, is that it seems like we've hodgepodge a lot of things together over time. And so three main things I just wanna talk about tonight, a little bit about our mental health. Obviously, I think the big thing, if you're in the high school, is the new diploma pathways, and we're gonna share that with you. And then also the reviewing of the academic student handbook, which you guys have all gotten to see. And so if you're ready there, Jackie. We have really four people, and we, and we are not a counseling area anymore. We are student services. And those four people I have listed here, Heather Adams and Lindsay, or Heather and Joyce, they work with the high school students, nine through twelve for the most part. Leslie Guy is six through nine, and Lindsay Adams, she is who we hired last year, is our mental health coordinator. And she's well under her way with her counseling. She's also taking classes this year, and she'll be licensed if things go well sometime this fall. What what I have two numbers listed here to give you an idea of what's going on with the mental health. And as you look at this, Heather Adams, she's seen two hundred people in counseling and sixty-three in mental health. So the counseling is when a, a student comes down and has a question about their transcript or taking a summer class or a class to get to the polytech or whatever that case may be. Mental health means that, I'm right on that fringe today. I'm, I'm, I'm a little shaky. My, things aren't going well at home. I've lost my job. I've lost, we've lost water, whatever that case may be. So that gives you an idea that just in the high school alone, we've had five hundred and eighteen counseling-type episodes. And those are the, the big ones. And what I mean by that, a lot of times, each of the counselors, they have a lunch period where they supervise. So there's lots of, hey, this, this ACP history, why should I take that instead of just regular history? What is it? And that's not included in that. So there's lots of informal. But the hundred and ninety-nine mental health, that's what's documented with our students in grades nine, nine through twelve.
Three eighty-one, because that one ninety-nine was just Leslie. So I think it's, I'd added.
Okay, I, I may be, you're right.
Three eighty-one.
One ninety-nine twice, so that makes it even worse.
Three eighty-one.
And so.
Well, unless that's just the high school.
That's just high school.
Are you separating six through nine?
Yep, if you get the next one, Jackie. And, and that's why I say that, that the four of them work so well together, that there's a lot of, I, I'll just give you an idea of what our day was like here in the office today. Lindsay Adams' little boy is absent today. He, he's, he's sick. She has to stay home. So what happens is, we have to have, we had a student had a meltdown today, so much so that we had to have an emergency assessment come out. So while that's going on, we get word that another student is thinking about self-harming. So we have two major things going on in the office at one time. And Lindsay Adams isn't there. Heather's down there trying to give AP testing. And so that was just one day out of many. And it is, without Lindsay Adams there to try to pick up some of the slack and do this, it's very difficult because you can ask Joyce, we were trying to work on the master schedule a little bit. That, that just gets pushed to another day because obviously this takes precedence. And so our numbers with mental health are, are off the chart high, and they continue to be. Just to give you an idea, a little bit of what I'm talking about, mental health referrals this year, twenty-one. DCS abuse, which could be domestic violence, could be whatever's going on in the house. We've had to make thirty of those. Eleven inpatients where they're going to Michiana or they're going somewhere where they're getting residential treatment. We have twenty-five students on a safety plan, and we've had twenty-six emergency services. And that's where maybe it's four county that's came out, maybe it's the emergency assessment that came out today. So the mental health is a, it, it's just a thing that happens and it's, it's, I hate to say it, it's just part of every day at the high school. And it, it's tough because whatever's going on right now in a kid's life, we're asking them to come back tomorrow and write an essay and asking them to focus. They're hungry. I know a girl who lives there in Galveston, their, their pipes broke. They've been without water for probably four or five months. Okay? And so it's things that maybe we take for granted or we don't think of in the classroom that these kids are experiencing every day. And so, Ryan, if you ask me, what, one of the, the biggest hurdles we have?
Is coming.
It's, it's, it's mental health and what these kids are experiencing outside of how, at the, the school.
What's changed? You've been doing this for a long time. What, what's changed from twenty years ago?
You know, I, I, I would say from when I first started, it was common experiences. If I said, we're, we're talking about, you're talking about pigs, and we think that's a common experience? Not, not really, because we got two bus full of kids that come in off of the base. They, they don't ever see a pig. We've got kids that live up towards Logan's Wort, they don't see a pig. Those common experiences have changed. And I would say that they also see the school as, as an, an end to getting a diploma or whatever they're looking for. Not as a place where like, how do I get involved so much? And so that, that's, that's a hard thing. I think the transient population, because if, and, and you can talk to Dr. Jernigan, and he, he laughs. You know, if, if they, if they get mad at them at McConacaw, they're coming over to see if the grass is green on our side, and they say, no problem. We'll take those two, because I got three that are coming back your way. And it, it's just a constant transient. And it's very difficult when you look at test scores and that type, that Tim Johnson's a great teacher, but when I'm only here for twenty days, because I'm going to McConacaw and then I'm going back to wherever, then I come back. It's not better. It, it puts us at a real disadvantage.
What is school safety plan? What is that?
Like, you might be wanting to hurt yourself, so that means you, the only time you can leave the classroom is go to the nurse's station to use the bathroom.
Oh, okay.
You can't leave unassisted. Like an adult, like if you're leaving this room, the adult in that room needs to let us know, hey, be on the lookout, so-and-so's coming.
Okay.
What are the services?
I'm thinking of self-harming right now. I'm, I'm thinking of, of, of hanging myself. I, and, and so we, we have to get someone out right now. The situation we had today, the parent was notified, the parent came out, the emergency crisis unit met with the mom and the son. And so that's why I say it's, it's an emergency. It's something that can't wait. They're, they're talking about self-harm in most cases at school.
Enter a lot of those that have had emergency services, then go along with some sort of school safety plan usually. So there's, those are, those are one in the same. They've had emergency, and they're coming back into school, you put them on a safety plan, so you know what's going.
And those would be the ones we've added this year, in addition to what we've continued on from the previous year. So these are just the new numbers.
And some of that also happens after they come back from their placement at their.
So, yeah, okay. And the mental health referrals, is that outside of CDs?
Yes, so not always do they need, yes. We, we use the Columbia Scale Suicide Scale, and we utilize that to decide, do we, is it, do we need to call the emergency service? Do we put them on a safety plan? But there's always a parent notification. It's just not always, do we need to call in emergency services?
And is that, so you say these are new numbers. So you have, you have a lot more kids that are maybe on safety.
Our goal is not always to keep them, some can transition off of them. It just depends. But a lot of times when there's mental health needs, it's on, it's ongoing. And they, yeah. But we've had some that come off of them because it's situational and not necessarily lifelong, but these are just additional.
Unfortunately, we're not gonna solve that.
And, and sometimes it's a matter of
Probably not gonna solve it, but at least that student knows they have a safe place in the building.
Well, yeah.
And we're there to.
Help them manage being here and hopefully being successful.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So those are new, and is that, is that six through twelve?
Yes, that would be everything.
Hey, a couple of things, and I've shared this presentation, so I won't read everything to you. A couple of things that we've really gotten going this year is the Bring Change to Mind. And it, for, for the, that don't know what Bring Change to Mind is, it's a mental health awareness that Lindsay Adams and Leslie Guy have, have created this year. It, it's a club. And so the kids have the opportunity to join the club. They meet about every other week, every third week, and they try to do activities. And the big goal is they try to have uplifting things, whether it's something a junior high kid thinks of, and, and it's so positive, and it sounds so elementary, though. They just take the post-it notes and they say, you're great. Walk around the building, they put that on every kid's locker. They put things in the bathroom. During the, the I-Learn, they, they wrote positive encouragement to every kid. And so they, they do a lot of things like that. They go on during the course of the year. The, the big thing is, we had our, our suicide walk there here about a week ago. The students, and this is the way, my opinion, this is how it's supposed to work. We tell them what we would like to do, and they run with it. And then they start coming up with ideas of, of how to make the day better and how to get this. The Bring Change to Mind, they have officers, and so it's just like a club. And so they, they kind of bring the agenda. So we probably won't meet again this year, but when they come back and meet in August, they're gonna set their goals for the year of what they wanna do. I thought I would just share with you just, just real briefly here. We, we, we came up with the new incentive plan last year, and one of the big things is, when I met with my leadership team, is if we can't get them to the school, them being the kids, we can't teach them. They're always working from a hole. They're always, if they miss today, they don't get today's assignment. They show up tomorrow. And now they've got two assignments they're expected to get. And if they're an average student, it's just, it's a snowball. They, they just never get caught up. And so one of the big things we wanted to do this year is, with this incentive program, is to try to encourage attendance. Mixed results. The junior high has went up just a little bit, and the high school, it, it's, it's about the same. It's went down just, just a couple of tenths of a percent there. The, the numbers here are unexcused and excused calls. And so unexcused is if your child misses, parent calls in. And I think that's a big thing, because we, that was one of the things I emphasized with Greg and Mandy at the beginning of the year. I want the parents to know their kids aren't here. And an all-call goes out to them automatically, but if they miss a couple of days of school and, no, we've not hurt anybody, I want those parents called to see what's going on. So just a snapshot of the attendance, graduation, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What, what is that? What are you saying there with like twenty, twenty-five junior high, one point one eight and four point one five? Unexcused, unexcused, what, per day, per month?
Per student.
How many per, okay.
Yeah, per student. So if, tomorrow, if the student misses, one of two things are gonna happen. Either it's gonna be excused, parent's gonna call, call in, or it's unexcused. No one contacts with this. And so one percent, almost what, a little over a percent?
Okay.
Students' expenses, yes.
Okay. Every day?
Well, it's over the course of a hundred and sixty days.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, that's the average.
Yeah, about, about three or four a day. So that's not bad. Graduation rate for last year, this, it graduated a year ago, we were at ninety-seven point seven-three percent. The year before that was ninety-five point five. And when I go to the DOE there on the GPS there, the ninety-seven point nine, or seven-three is the highest we've had since twenty-twenty. So I think we are trending in the right direction there. And if you wanna know some of the reasons for that, Barb Birch with the credit recovery that we do, the King's Academy trying to get those kids back on pace, because it may sound crazy, it takes forty-two credits to graduate, but we'll have a kid move in and they'll have about twenty-three. And they're a second semester junior. And if you do the math on that, they, they, they gotta get busy. And so that's why I say the King's Academy's been very good for that, because a traditional schedule, like you guys would have had, it's impossible. It's impossible. So that's a couple of those reasons why that. Discipline, I put this on there, and we had a heck of a time trying to get last year's discipline on there. And this is the number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions. And I'll, I'll say this, that Greg and Mandy have, have done just a great job of working with kids. And this year, we've had forty-five junior high students that have either been placed in in-school suspension or out of school, and in the high school, fifty-six. And I, I don't have the data to prove it to you, but I can just tell you, I know, the numbers are down.
Yeah.
Those are down. And I think that maybe it's a combination of a lot of things, their personalities. Maybe it's a combination that the counselors have more time because Lindsay Adams dealing with some other things, that maybe they get a little bit more attention, so to speak, of, to work through things before they fly off the handle, do something that we all regret. So those are some of the numbers, and next year, I'll, I'll use this as our baseline, and I'll come back to you next year and tell you kind of where we're at. Next thing, I'm gonna transition to Joyce Bangle. And she's gonna talk to you about the diploma comparison. The kids that are in eighth grade this year will have a whole new diplomas they come up, and you're gonna see a sheet, and if you have those, if you wanna pass those out. I think I've shared this with you, but I'm just a visual type of person. This will at least allow you to look compared to what our, what's next year, our sophomore, juniors, seniors will have as compared to what our freshmen will have. And so we wanna go over that. And Joyce will talk a little bit about readiness seals. And then we get to the point where we're, we're looking at the seventh grade, and I really want you to look in when she brings up the seventh grade. And what we're talking about, a rotation class, in the past, we've had four-rotation class. And I think it's very important that the kids experience a lot of different things. Well, everything lines up for me next year. Our seventh grade is the biggest class. And so we're gonna have five-rotation classes. Instead of a quarter, we're gonna have about thirty-six days in there instead of forty-five, and we've added another area. And so I think that's important, and Joyce will go over that. I don't wanna steal all your, your thunder there, Joyce. Joyce told me the last time she was at a school board meeting, it's when you guys approved her hire. So be nice to Joyce, maybe she'll come back more often.
Yeah, I will, I will make you proud of this. So in the packet I gave you, is the first two pages is about Indiana College Core, so this is that, I'm gonna talk about that. So I'm gonna skip that for right now and turn that over to her here after I get through this. So just something to keep in mind, the state is still providing us with information. In fact, we still don't have a companion document for the Core Description Guide for next school year. So we're cleaning on what we know from last year and hoping that's changing. So this first page, the current and future Indiana diplomas comparisons, that shows you on the left-hand side the Core Forty requirements, and then on the right-hand side is the new diploma requirements for the incoming eighth graders and then beyond as well. So, so just a few different things to point out. There is gonna be a communication, so a speech class that's gonna be required. Personal finance is now going to be required, computer science. Those are some ones that are gonna be definitely new, that wasn't offered before or had to be taken before. So there's that to consider, and some things that we're trying to, you know, we figured out a plan and, and hoping that it's the best for all of our kids that they'll have to take and pass. So on the back.
Saying they're gonna get those in eighth grade?
No.
Okay.
If you hang in there, Becky, I'll show you the plan, six through twelve, what classes are gonna take, and it'll probably help your question.
So, no, those are not gonna be eighth-grade classes. So on the back of that page is the readiness seals for enrollment, employment, enlistment, and service, honors, and then honors plus. A lot of this information here is the information from the state that we're definitely waiting on. More information is supposed to be forthcoming here throughout the rest of this year and into the beginning of next school year. So to answer questions on the, the readiness seals, we'll try, but I will guarantee one of the answers, because state data on has provided it with us yet.
One question for you real quick, on the math part. So I think it's great. I did have personal finance. I think it's phenomenal. Four additional math credits. Where do you think that's gonna land, since you're taking algebra or geometry?
So algebra two and geometry do fall under those additional math classes or credits that they can take. The state has provided us with some guidance and some flexibility with that as well, though.
So instead of just having the algebra, algebra two, geometry, we're just adding the personal finance and probably one of those others fall off the back end?
Potentially, yes.
Probably better, yeah.
And it's gonna be dependent too on what college they're thinking they wanna do, or what they're thinking they wanna do after high school. You know, right now, I have, we haven't really heard of many colleges changing their requirements, so that seems something else that they'll have to keep in mind. And we'll, we'll help and guide them through that.
And go for foreign language.
They will still, well, so it's not, it is required, but it's not required. So that's where the seals come more into play, like if the honors seal enrollment, they have to have at least four world language credits. So that would be two years of a foreign language compared to where academic honors currently, students have to have three years of a foreign language in order to have that.
Five thousand foot view, this gonna be tougher or harder?
It, it depends on the student.
The counselors or the students?
Both. You first. It'll be tougher on you? Both, you first, going to be tougher on you?
Um, I think trying to track it and keep track of which student is on which path.
Especially if they change the paths.
Yes, it's going to be much harder than what we currently are doing. Um, I think right now the pathways are pretty easy for us to track and which diploma they're on is pretty easy and straightforward. Um, I, I won't talk too far, Mrs. Adams, but I know when I've been meeting with a few eighth graders that have questions, um, because Mrs. Guy's not super comfortable with some of this new stuff is, where we've attended some meetings. Um, my brain has to transition from the old diploma requirements to the new ones and I'm constantly just pulling this page out. So I'm trying to, um, advise them correctly and that's, that's.
And I also think Brian, what's very difficult, also we don't have to take, uh, world language anymore. Well, if you want your kid to go to Purdue, they better be taking world language.
No, I agree.
Or they're not going to be accepted. So that's what I think is hard because if I'm, the type of kid I was, I was looking kind of for maybe the easy route.
By the, by the ninth grade, absolutely.
I, I wanted the best results. Well, unfortunately, it may not turn out the way I want in four years if we maybe don't listen.
Especially if a student starts engaging in their junior year and says, oh, now I gotta take.
Now we got an issue.
Yeah.
So that's what I think is really difficult.
Okay.
But I think as we get through the grade levels, there is a little bit more flexibility as they go up, which we'll show you here.
I'll do the questions, I did a great job.
Okay. Any other questions before I move on? Okay. All right, so the next one is the pathways. So these are the current pathways that we offer, um, in-house. Um, and then we've adopted, um, some new pathways for, um, our students. So the civics arts, so this is this, um, you know, the, um, um, so the band choir, foreign arts, publications, and then the JAG. Those are locally created pathways that we've adopted, um, and then students can meet those requirements, um, as additional pathway. Uh, the right-hand column is the polytech pathways, um, and they are offering, starting next year, the social and community services. So, uh, we made this to provide it to our students and our parents. Um, so then at the bottom, um, it is noted, um, asterisk, this is dual credit classes. Um, if they're tele-sized, then they are also a weighted class. And then underlined, it also would meet the technical honors diploma requirements as long as they meet every requirement for that diploma as well. So this is good for our, um, current freshman and on up. And then we'll have to apply, do some adjusting to it once the incoming eighth graders are freshmen, uh, because some of this will be changing for them. All right, so here's where we're going to kind of break out. Uh, this is, we've put in a slide for each of the grade levels. So, uh, the junior high will have their four core classes, math, science, English and social studies. Um, and then sixth grade, um, those options. And then they will have one round of rotations and then everyone will be in the study hall. So their rotations will be, um, a quarter, so they'll be in there for, um, my things.
Wait. Go back. What is digital citizenship?
So that is a, a general kind of overview of computers and how to properly handle yourself online and the best ways.
And how to be safe on them, I'm sure there's a lot of that.
Yeah, okay.
What's language arts lab in there, just more English?
Yeah. Kind of some more remediation and help with.
Is that what it is, remediation? Every kid will have that, so.
Every kid will have that because.
During the course of the year.
It, I mean, there's some kids that don't get to do rotations because they're in remediation all the time.
No, not for us. So every, every student will have the four core classes. Um, they'll either be in band choir or they'll be in S T S six and music six. So that'll be those are just our classes. Um, and then the rotation classes, they will have them, these rotations are a quarter class. And then everyone will have a study hall in six-three next year. All right, so seventh grade, um, like I said a couple of minutes ago, this is where, um, their rotations are going to be, have five in them and they will have two sets of rotations. Everyone will have those sets of rotations, band choir or study hall as long, uh, as well as their fourth.
Can they pick those rotations?
No.
We want every kid to experience.
So some of these.
That's what, that's what I was saying, Becky. We're approximately thirty-six days.
Okay.
Each one of these. And so the kid that's never experienced that, thirty-six days, like it or not.
Uh huh.
Um, Tim, I'm guessing language arts or not, they're, they're getting thirty-six days of it.
But there's two rotations.
That, that's correct. Because we're on a seven period a day. And so that they'll, they'll experience all these different things. And there's things that kids will really like, art. I've never really had much interest in, oh, Mr. Hurst is a great guy. I want to go down that pathway later on. So we want the kids to experience as many different things as we can to when we get to those pathways. It's not just say, well, I don't know what fax is. Yeah, you've had that. And so that's what we want them to experience, what's going on somewhere along the line. The medical detectives is a science-based, um, they, they do a little dissecting. They try to try and figure out what, what, I don't know, this, this bone maybe could have came from. And it kind of leads it to them. So it's, it's a hands-on type class.
So how many times are you going to be down your office, not in there, um, they're not their program? Their schedule printed out every thirty-six days?
Well, they can see their schedule on Power School.
Okay.
Um, so they should have access to it and usually, um, and usually when they come down, we, we direct them to go to their house.
And the great thing, Mr. Snowburger, he already knows the dates that we're going to do this next year. And so if tomorrow was day thirty-seven of the school year, it's, the next one's going to, the students will know. They'll know.
How many kids, how many kids in seventh grade utilize study hall in-house?
Uh, like how many we have interested for next year, is what you're asking?
They, if they want to continue in band choir, there's no study hall.
Correct.
Correct. And, um, so I just didn't know how many.
The, the study hall for sixth grade, I think it's important for the transition because they're trying to figure things out. But if you start to see the older they get, it, it's, 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 it's a challenge for a seventh grader to set study hall for forty-five minutes every day.
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to triple up on English.
Well, it's true, thirty-six days-ish, so I mean, I mean, as far as how many students are not in band or choir and are in study hall, honestly, I cannot give you any answer.
That's what it is. It was just.
There are going to be fun English activities.
Yeah, that's what it is. Thanks.
Yeah, probably. So eighth grade, so, um, this is where some of our eighth graders will be able to take some high school class or some classes for high school credit, um, and then they don't have to take those during high school. They'll have their four core classes. Um, one change for PE for our incoming freshmen for next year is they only have to have one credit in PE instead of two. So we've, um, starting with our next year's, um, eighth graders, they will do their PE credit for high school in eighth grade. Um, they're already doing health credit in eighth grade, so they'll have both of those in eighth grade. And then PCC is preparing for college and careers. That's also now a requirement for every student to take. And then the intro to business, um, is a, um, elective class. It's also a high school class. And if they're in one of the, um, arts, um, journalism or, um, choir, band, those classes, they do have to have that as part of that pathway. So if they think they may not be interested in that, but then later on, you know, sophomore year, they decide they want to do one of those pathways instead, they'll have that credit out of the way if they don't want that done. Um, and then they're in band choir or introduction band. So those are enrolled.
Just one thing to point out to Joyce, if you look at the pathway sheet, it said, one of the things is the intro to business. And so right now a, a band kid may not know that that pathway is available to them. But as long as they just do what we say and take the intro to business, they can take that class as a sophomore or junior and we're good. But they have to have this class to get started in the thing where we got issues.
You're trying to set their foundation, so they don't know exactly what they're going to be doing.
Absolutely, so that's why they, they have no choice and they'll all take it.
Yeah.
So those will be the junior high around the high school classes. So, um, starting with our, for our ninth grade, we're heavy on the core classes, um, and then just a couple electives. So, um, the computer science is a new requirement for all of our, um, incoming freshmen to have in the long. So they'll be taking that and then they'll have a one semester of elective. Um, and so our incoming eighth graders for next year, they will need to take a PE or do a flex credit so they can, um, do that as their other semester, get that PE credit out of the way. Um, world history is technically not a requirement for the new Indiana diploma. However, um, some of the seals do say that they have to have world history. Um, and as of right now, um, some colleges are still requiring world history. So we're having all of our students take it, um, so they have that basis covered if they decide.
And they need five credits in social studies.
Yes.
So there would be two, two in university, government, take it.
Tenth grade, um, so this is where they will start to have a little bit more room in their schedule for electives. They can start going to polytech, um, and kind of starting on their pathways more, um, than their freshman year. So, um, this, they will also do their speech, um, that their sophomore year. Um, that'll be one semester with one semester of English to handle.
So there really isn't room to go to the polytech as freshmen?
No, not unless, so we said, uh, no freshmen were going to polytech starting next year unless they, we had a conversation with them and parents and we felt like they were a good student and could handle that. Um, we've had a lot of students at polytech that have failed the core, the college classes. Um, and then it's potentially going to hurt them on the line, down the line with financial aid. Um, and then they can't continue in that pathway and then they have to pick a different pathway. So we're hoping by waiting another year, um, it'll get them better prepared and they'll be more successful when they're at polytech to process classes.
Have we ever had speech before, have we?
Long time ago.
No, but I mean, in recent years.
Chris says he did, so he's.
Yeah, did he have speech? Yeah, we did.
We tried, we tried offering it as an elective, but shocker, there's not.
Hey, I think it's fantastic because we've been learning a lot of people in the eye actually talk.
Next year, we're going to have two elective options. We've got kids interested, but we'll get there when we get to it.
So junior year, um, this is where they'll have a little bit more flexibility in their maths. So they could do if, if we, they see they're not going to college, they are a little bit weaker in their math area. Um, this is where we're thinking we'll do algebra two or business math. So it's going to be a little bit of an easier math class for them, um, and go, kind of go from there. Um, the additional science course would be that third science that's required that, you know, the two additional science credits where the two STEM classes, if they need to graduate. So it just kind of depends on what college they're picking, um, between that. Um, but most of it will probably be STEM class, so they'll be taking that here.
Can eighth graders take algebra one?
Yes.
It was.
Yes.
Those would be our high flyers that will eventually be calculus students.
Uh, and this is also the year that they can go to the career center, Williamsburg, Filton Hall if they choose to and do a pathway. So they will only, they would only be in the only half a day. So there's some flexibility. Um, so the senior year is the, um, least required classes, so they have some flexibility in that. Um, the personal finance and the government, that's, that's the last room. That's what we're thinking, the best time for them to take it. Um, you know, they can take another math class, they could take another science class, they can finish out their career center, um, work-based learning, their senior year, that type of thing for their senior.
Thank you.
And I think the next slide is over to, yep, okay.
I kind of broke this up. Um, you, you may have heard this in, in, on the TV and that type of the ICT, Logan's Port newspaper. He, he thinks it's a big enough deal because he's wanted to come out and interview Joyce. And so we just thought you should at least know what we're talking about if you're here.
So if you look on the new diplomas, I, because I don't know all of the new lingo, there is something on the pathways that talks about they have to earn a credential of value and that is going to be on the honors plus seal. So this kind of segwayed and allowed us to start offering an honor, a credential of value, the Indiana College Core. This has been a whole year, which we'll show you the timeline, um, process. And we're still not quite done. Uh, we're getting much, much closer. In fact, he emailed me this evening saying we've been giving him, um, I know you were looking, um, we've been giving him updates. They're making a website, which we can show you in a minute, that's specific to Louis Cass. Um, he's changed a lot of stuff. He emailed me tonight, said he's updated it, so I haven't checked it to see if it's right, but we can check it on it here in a minute. Um, oh, can you go back to the other one, sorry? So college core is, it's thirty general education, college level courses that come together. Um, there are six competence, I don't know if they call it competency, but yeah, six competency areas. The kids have to get at least three college credits in those six areas. But in one of them, the scientific ways, they actually have to have a minimum of five. Um, and then they say twelve elective classes. So none of our CTE college credits will count. So they're all core academic classes that make up this thirty college credits. Um, and they just say gives students a good base. This will transfer to any public school in Indy, uh, public college in Indiana. Privates, I mean, you, you just don't know how they're going to take it. Um, the one nice thing that they've mentioned is, you know, not doing it yet, we don't, we're not quite sure how this looks. But one of the selling points was if it's a class that a college would not normally take, if they finish and complete this college core, they will take it. So it might be by itself, they would not accept it. But if it's as part of the college core, public universities will accept that. Um, so the way that we will get there through the college core is through our ACP courses, which are our dual credit through IU. AP exams, which they have to get a three, four or five on. And then we do have Ivy Tech academic dual credit classes, but those are all through the polytech. So that's kind of specific to the kids who go there. They don't have to go to the polytech and take those courses to finish it though. We do have ACP in-house, we have AP. And then by partnering, which we'll get here in a minute, we met with IU K and we met with Ivy Tech. We went the IU K route. Once upon a time, years ago, we had all of our dual credits, pretty much our academic, all with Ivy Tech. Changing of teachers, changing of credentialing, everything changes. Now all of our academic dual credits are all with IU Bloomington. So once we met with both of those to see kind of what our, what our possibilities were, we ended up, it made the most sense to go with IU K to do our partnership because of our ACP courses. Um, we currently only have twelve in-house. And since we've partnered with, since we partnered with IU and they're going to be our credentialing institution, a minimum of fifteen has to be through them, through them. So something you guys don't have and we're, this, we're trying to get this all out to the kids. Um, there's a list, which doesn't mean anything to you guys, but there's a list of, these courses are free to our students. So they are all free, they can take them online during the school day. There are some that are going to be synchronous and asynchronous and then they call them semi-synchronous. So meaning they'll do them all online or there's some that they will log in at a certain time, but the majority of the class is done, then online, but they might log in at certain times with teachers. Um, so we have the ability to utilize those for free. The one thing, and I know I've been emailing, which I'm trying to figure out, I don't know if textbooks can be covered. We've got a fund set up for, um, coverage of these courses. Um, but I, we're still working out some of those little pieces about textbooks and, and making sure that it's accessible and able to be taken by students, no matter their income, no matter their socioeconomic status, those types of things. So we're still trying to figure out all of those little things. Um, if you, are you able to click, will that, if you click on it, Jackie, will that take you to the website? Okay, so this is like the main college core website. The students will be able to make, um, their own little plan. Um, if you scroll down and you type Louis Cass in right there, would you mind doing that for me, sorry? And then, yep, I was going to say, and then hit begin. So it's going to ask, I think, are you ready? So yep, let's get started. And so if you scroll down, this is what he just emailed me that he said he's updated. If you scroll down and you hit the plus buttons by these, these are the six different areas, it's going to show you what we have available at Louis Cass. So this is specific to us. Now, with that being said, this is the part that's going to get a little tricky with the kids. So this English composition where it's Ivy Tech, those are polytech classes. So those kids that go to polytech are going to have the ability to get that. If they don't go through a polytech program, that's not going to be a course that they'll be able to get. However, we have AP English and then currently we have ACP English, um, which is our senior English first semester. We are looking at, what we're running into is this, this and this, they all meet the same English. So we've been working with Mrs. Davis, what can we do to get more English? So we are working on changing AP language to AP Lit next year. That'll be a different link. Um, and then also then in the future, she's hoping to add what's called L two O two, which is another literature class, ACP, to her docket. So she will have three ACP courses that she'll be able to teach hopefully. So she will have three ACP courses that she'll be able to teach hopefully in the upcoming years. So if you, Jackie, if you click on this little down arrow right here, do you mind? Sorry. So it tells you like what you have to have, three, four, or five. Now, that one doesn't go into great detail, but depending on different scores to get you different credit levels. And so the kids will be able to do the drop-down box. If I get a three on AP Bio, then it will show you what college class it counts. If I get a four or five, then it'll show you what college counts. So they can kind of do their plan, they can make their plan what they're gonna do, completed, not. This is all online for them. Now, they did give us, and I think, Mr. Young, did you give them the, yes, that little checklist? You guys have the this also, this is not, this is not as up to date yet. Like this was our initial, they're still working on getting all this finalized. But we will have this hard copy also that we can give to them and it will line out some of the courses. This has all of the ACP courses that are offered that the kids can take. We're gonna, we, we don't want them to avoid teachers or classes that maybe they just don't want and try to go online. So obviously, we're going to put stipulations, if we offer it here, you must take it here, those kinds of things. Let's see, the only class that we don't have for next year, that we are gonna allow them to do online for next year, but then in the years to come, if this, the speaking and listening, only ACP or only speech will meet that. So we do have two sections. They said nobody would take speech, but next year they are. We have two sections of speech. In order for Mrs. Davis to be approved to do ACP speech, she had to teach speech for a whole year. And she have the, she had the academic, like, she has all of the other things except for being able, or saying that she's taught it for a year. Yeah, so she's gonna teach it for a year next year. And then the following year, she'll be able to allow or add ACP speech. So our kids will take speech as sophomores. And then for ACP speech, the requirement is they either have to be a senior or they have to have had regular speech first. So our goal would be, they take it as a sophomore. Junior year, they have ACP speech as one of their semesters of English. And then senior year, they will do ACP, the one thirty-one, and then hopefully by the time this eighth grade are seniors, we'll have that L two oh two. So they'll be able to get hopefully nine credits through English alone. So that's the long-term goal, I guess. Again, I haven't checked this to see if it's completely all right, because he just emailed this evening to say, I've made the changes and to check it over. So the kids don't really have this yet, we haven't sent it out, because we just wanted to put it in their hands until it was completely ready. No, Jackie, would you mind going back to the PowerPoint, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
How many kids do you anticipate using?
Well, I mean, I know as a guest. That's the thing, it is, it's not gonna be easy. And especially with having so many AP classes that are in there, because those are not easy exams. And in order to get a three, four, or five, it, it's, it's a lot of work. So I know Logan's Board has the ICC, and for as big as they are, they have pretty small numbers who actually accomplish, accomplish it. I know, knowing that we're smaller.
Yeah.
Even so, it's just so hard to say. We have some kids who go through AP and they're nail in those, and they're passing them left and right. And then we have some who might pass one or two. So it's just so hard to say. One of the things we've looked at is, how do we get teachers interested in potentially doing some more graduate level courses in their subject? Because if they were to do that, we could go the dual credit route versus the AP, not rely on just an exam for the dual credit, but have them already licensed to do the dual credit. But that's, you know, them going back to school and getting masters at finances and all of those times that right now, they, yeah. Exactly. So something like that, because again, once upon a time, and I know just because I've been here for, for in chemistry alone, kids could get seven dual credits. But that was the teacher and who we had at the time, and you can't control those types of things. But we do have AP, can we have AP Bio? We do have quite a few AP science, we have a lot of other ones, it's just, those rely on that test. So that's the only thing that hangs out there, because then, so they can get junior, senior, all the way through, take their exams, they're taking them right now, that's what I've been doing. They will not get their results until the summer. So we won't know, they won't know even if they completed the ICC until they get those results. And then as far as it gets awarded completely through IU K. So they will send any AP scores to the college, to IU K, and they're responsible for sending, if they have any through Ivy Tech, they send those dual credits to IU K. IU K looks at the thirty, if they have them, and then they award that. So we won't even know for some of the kids if they've met it until we get the exam scores. So yeah, it's hard to say a number. It's in, kind of like with the new diploma, when you, like, is this gonna be harder this year? It's gonna be so individualized, more than ever, and that is exactly what this is gonna be too.
When you say dual credit.
Um, yes, so our, well. ACP is dual credit. Yes, ACP is just dual credit through IU Bloomington.
Yeah.
And then most of our other dual credits are all through Ivy Tech. And we have a lot of dual credits, but there are CTE courses, our career technical courses, those don't count in the core.
And mostly it's being taught by.
Um, well, yes, at the Polytech, yes. Matt Mitter teaches some at the Polytech, and then we have our ag department have a ton of dual credits. So yeah, we have a ton of through there, and then there are a lot at the Polytech, but the majority of those are instructors through Ivy Tech. Okay, so any other questions about this? Um, so right now, we have Mr. Hall with ACP Government, we have Mrs. Davis with ACP English, and. Oh, yes, thank you, Leah Throneberry with ACP History. Her ACP history is two. So first semester, they get three history credits, second semester, they get another three. It's like one oh five and one oh six, maybe, something along those lines, which we have those on another slide too. Those are the three that are all, that meet the qualifications. When we met with Ivy Tech and IU K, we took, like, I reached out to the teachers, hey, can you tell me what graduate credit hours you have? You know, just because we can only see so much when we look up their license to see if anybody, because it's eighteen graduate credit hours that they have to have in the subject area to then be able to teach the dual credit. So like Mrs. Dave, like lots, she's going through the training right now through IU. And that's the other reason why we chose IU, where they can offer her the classes for free, because they have graduate level courses and Ivy Tech, they do not. So in order to, if we can incentivize or get the teacher more on board, then also we can hopefully get their, you know, they can get it through IU for free. And then we will have more ACP courses and things like that. Any other questions about that so far? Okay, so this one, this is just our timeline. So we started way back in the fall with this. This has been a very long drawn-out process, but we wanted to do it right. And, you know, we were also putting it in amongst everything else, but we also were waiting for Dr. Dotree, because we knew it was gonna be something new. So we've met with partnerships, we've, and we talked to other schools and kind of, and some schools partnered with Ball State. Well, they, they weren't even on our radar, because we don't have a single Ball State dual credit. So like, there are different ways you could go, it's just for us, ACP, IU K met, made the most sense. At the very end, so we have May of twenty-five, so we're waiting for this online portal to be completed. And hopefully, we can check it tomorrow, and it will be. So our next step, we've met with students to introduce it. And they kind of know that it's, they know that's the thing. We met with tenth and eleventh graders, the kids who for next year, it's gonna impact the most. And we're hoping to still fit in another meeting with them now that we have that online portal, because that was not in existence when we introduced it to them. So hopefully, that will help them understand it a little bit better too. And then we'd like to, then we're planning to send out information to parents. And as Mr. Young mentioned, Josh, Josh Flynn with the newspaper, he is coming on Monday to meet with us and wants to do a little write-up about it as well. And so we had a picture that the kids took with the banners, and we partnered that he's still gonna be putting out there. So that's just kind of how we got there, the roadmap. And then these are a few to us about the classes, but these are the ones that we currently have. Speech is gonna be hopefully then the following year, but we will be able to allow students to take this through the online classes that they're gonna give us. Obviously, with this being new, we're working out the logistics of this. So we will give them a class period to work on, say, they wanna do speech. So they will do, it'll be, it might say study hall online to start with until they get that class, but they can work on that class during that class period. And so they're not taking a full load and then trying to do two online ACP courses or whatever it will be, we'll work it into their schedule in some way. The ones that are hybrid, where they have to log in at certain times, so it'll be interesting, and we'll, I mean, we're not quite sure how those are gonna look yet, but we might have to. Those will be specific times, the ones that are offline, that's a lot of more flexibility for the kids. And then this, this is just there, we get the grant money every year. Obviously, I don't know the money side of it as well, but in order for, for ICC completion, you can get up to fifteen hundred dollars per student who does complete it. That's not fifteen hundred, though, in addition to the money you get for the honors diploma, the money you get, so it's just the difference. So if they're an honors diploma kid and they do ICC, then we would get an additional four hundred dollars for them for completing that too. So there's a financial piece to it as well. The next slide, Jackie. Okay, so then this, any questions about ICC before we roll into that then? I mean, we're still learning it as well, but we are closer than ever to finally being able to roll it out. It's been a long process, but we're excited to have it, and the kids seem excited, and it's not gonna be for everybody, because it's very specific in what they have to take. And it's like we've told them, even with the new diplomas, sometimes the kids look at this and they see employment plus, and they think, that is the one I have to do, that's the best one. It, it might not be the best for them. So we're trying to make sure, like, this is individual, those diplomas are now individual. It, what's best for them is not maybe the plus, it might be just the rig. So it's gonna be more individual, so.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
How do you educate the parents on this?
Well, you know, that's, we're gonna send the information out to at least introduce it. There's not gonna be a lot more we can do yet this year. So probably in the fall, we're gonna have to do more information on it. Hopefully by then, we'll know a little bit more too. It's kind of like with the new diplomas. It was just, that is though, we're at the mercy of the state, this, we've been a little at the mercy of IU K. But we'll send information out and kind of go from there. I don't, we might have an information, we haven't talked about the fall, how that will look, we're just trying to get it solidified yet still for the spring and hopefully get it done. Because we have to, I don't know the date in June, but we, if we have any students interested in taking these online for the fall semester, we will have to upload their, there's certain information that we have to upload to IU. So we'll have to have that done by June. So we're trying desperately to get this finalized, so we can meet with the kids who might be taking some in the fall, so that way in the, in June, we can get everything uploaded to IU for what they, what they need. So it's, I feel like if we started early, but it's like everything still comes down to crunch time. So yeah, but we are excited to do that, and it just kind of will learn as we go. And I don't know how many to expect, but at least it's another opportunity, if they wanna take it, it's there. Um, so for the handbook, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, this is kind of the transition, the third part that we were talking about this year was the handbook. And I know that that's later on here in the agenda, and you guys have had a chance to look at that, and obviously, if you have questions, you'll let us know. Just to give you an idea of how we did it, we invited parents to join our, our group, had the leadership committee make suggestions. And the leadership committee represents each of the disciplines, math, science, English, social studies. And so from there, I asked them to talk to their, the fellow math teachers, English teachers, what's important to them and what changes do we need to have? And so that's why when you looked at our, some of our changes, that's where that, that came from. I have to admit, Joyce and Heather and I looked heavily at the, the grading scale and, and the weighting. And where we got a lot of that information is we, we just looked at the local schools to see what other things we're doing. And I really thought maybe it was time to just, just revisit everything, and if we're gonna make changes, we need to do it. That's really all I wanna say about the handbook, and if you guys have questions, I mean, I suppose that time comes later, I don't know. I just wanted to give you a little background of, of what you were seeing and how we came up with some of these decisions.
So it's the new, the new high screening scale. Is it in line with most everybody around us there?
Yes, so, I, I, yeah, absolutely. Most of them, the, the only thing we added into the grade scale was we were not giving weight for honors, algebra, honors geometry, honors English nine and ten. And a lot of schools were not giving full weight, like, we give an extra point for AP ACP, they were giving like half. So we suggest, or we proposed a half of weight of GPA weight. And so in that new handbook, there was like a revised scale that had the half a point too. So it was just mainly picking up those honors classes that we weren't previously. I had a parent say, well, what's the incentive of doing that this year? And so that's kind, I mean, we started thinking about it that way, started looking at the handbook. Obviously, the incentive to prepare, but then I understand, like, they're gonna put a little more work in. So what, what is an, oh, way to get the kids interested in doing that, so that they can do English ten or honors English ten, and it doesn't matter. Sometimes they're gonna go with that regularly without that incentive, so.
And trying to keep it equitable for all students, that will affect this coming freshman. So really, we'll have two different grading or weighted scales for next year. Because if you remember there, if you're, we had a student, I can't remember who the principal was, it was not me, but we changed the, the weighted. And, and about November, December, I mean, that was not.
Yeah, not a good time.
It was bad.
No, and so that's why I say, even if you're gonna be a sophomore next year, that's probably not fair either. So at least all these freshmen will get to start off on equal footing.
Yeah.
If they wanna do it, they, they know that's a possibility.
And we chose, we, we looked at everything that they did, and we pinched that down, and like, what fits and makes the most sense for what we envision for Louis Cass and our students, and making sure that they're getting the weight where they deserve it. And that's the end of.
I mentioned that, um, what was it, she had, was getting a license.
She is working on getting her counseling, high school counseling.
To actually do what they're.
She'll be a licensed school counselor, yep. So Joyce and I, both are school counselors, and this guy is a social worker, and then this is out, so he's a school counselor.
Because you guys need, kind of, force power with all this stuff.
So absolutely.
I think that'll be the conversation we have to have when she picks up that license, in which direction you guys see how this goes.
You mentioned menopause health needs, which, you know, she's getting licensed to do this, because this looks crazy.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
I will tell you, so when you look at the numbers on the visits and things like that, we did at the beginning of the year, the counseling numbers are a little inflated, because that's how we, for anybody that came down, we were, they were counseling, that's how we logged them. And then September-ish, we said, okay, we'd like to be able to log, are they coming for counseling, like academic or something, or is it mental health? So that's where we swapped and started then tracking mental health. So some of those counseling numbers are mental health related, but by adding her, and I, again, I can't speak for Joyce, but the amount of additional academic counseling I've been able to do this year as opposed to previous years has been huge. And looking at the new diploma, with it being so individual, it's gonna be more difficult to do after. So I will say personally, I feel like academic counseling has, for me, increased and gotten better this year, just by having the additional help.
I would agree with that as well.
Is testing something you should be doing?
That's awfully on the nose for that.
Yes or no?
Yeah.
I say no.
Yeah. It's considered non-programmed in our, when we go through, they say not to, but it is, but, but when I say, they say not to, every, every counselor does.
That's all I'm saying.
We are not doing anything different than any other school. We are told when we go get our masters, nope, we should not do it, but every school has counselors do it. So, so I'm not saying that we're doing anything that everybody else isn't already doing, but, yep, absolutely.
Well, thank you, and this is very exciting to me for the opportunities we have for our kids. I guess the only thing I would say, sometime when the smoke clears a little bit, from a parent's perspective, because I was very involved with my kids planning out their high school career, because we're on this track, you know, of that, that you might wanna think through, how we're gonna educate the parents next. I know you're just trying to get on the kid's end, but this is a lot.
And one thing, we only really have one chance to roll it out, and, and this is the example I give. Christie's husband, Mr. Hall, he teaches government, he has Ivy Tech come in, and they do their presentation, and they talk about the summer school classes that they're gonna offer, sounds like a great deal. I got the email here last week.
Yeah.
Um, that said, we're not offering summer school classes, they're not free, we're not doing it. And so that's how quickly things can change, and if we bring.
No, I give it.
Yeah, we just gotta make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, it's so much.
We're out of control.
With the new diploma, we did have a freshman orientation. So they, they told. The unfortunate part is, is there's still so much that's not been given out to us by the state, that we are giving information with half the information that we need. As Joyce mentioned, there's a companion document. So normally, at this point in time, we'd have a course description guide that tells us what everything counts for, for every class in all of high school. We haven't seen that yet, and we're scheduling for next year. So we're hoping that these courses that have always counted for what they are, are still going to, but there's gonna be a lot of stuff that we'll have to look at the summer and pray that doesn't change, because we can only go off of the old information. So, so we did meet with them, but there's still a lot, so much unknown.
So it's not, and I, it's something to think about, how, how is, how is the Polytech really gonna play into this? I mean, if you, if you look at forty-two credit hours in all these seals, and if you're gonna go in that direction, you're not going down there. Or you're going down there, and if you start down there, you're not going to go back.
That's why we tried to front-load it, so that when they are, sophomore, definitely junior, senior, the kids have lots more choices.
There's, so there's actually, so there's six different seals, and then there's the main diploma. So if you look at this, do you mind if I hold this up, Becky? So this is actually considered a diploma. They, a kid can do just this, but if they do just this, they have to go, they have to still do the pathways that we're doing right now. So there's buckets two and three of this diploma, that still counts if they do just this. But then, if they want to go above, then they can go into those seals. But then, if they want to go above, then they can go into those seals, the employment seal, their pathways are in that. I can see a lot of kids going that avenue or, or just sticking with the main, I think that we'll still utilize pathways quite a bit. Because it's still in there, it's just a little bit different, looks a little different, or called a little different.
So first of all, I'm sorry we kept you here almost two hours, so I would like to start the new business with just you, is that all right? And I make a motion to approve the hiring of Christie Bergen as a third grade teacher, is that right?
But the.
Two thousand, not forty-two thousand.
The wage isn't correct.
On theirs.
At forty-two thousand, you're good with that.
No.
I'm impressed by how well behaved that young man has been over there and we have kept you here and there's probably ice cream to have at home, so. I made the motion to hire Christie at fifty-two thousand for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Fifty-two.
Yep, all right, all in favor?
All right.
Congratulations.
You are a wonderful lead. The whole reason I did this, because I have a feeling he's getting really tired, but he's done great. He's done phenomenal.
Yeah.
He played more dancing.
I think somebody's going to be a great Lewis Cass king.
Well, welcome back, glad you're here. Yeah, yeah. See ya.
All right, so we can move on to.
Well, I think we got to still have a couple of questions, which is why I want to get that out of the way. Do you have a question about dual credit on the handbook, we, we put that up in the, in Donnie?
Well, I think some of the, some of the explanation on, I think that's a kind of help.
Okay, all right, so you're good with that?
As much as I can.
Are we, are we putting the kitchen?
No, that, that, that was my next question is, we need to, I guess.
I got some questions for you on that. And notice the one, the one from QPH was dated last year.
So this was the, okay, so I did, there is another quote from QPH.
Last, well, hang on here.
No. So he, his original quote was from last year at this time. Okay, he went back and updated his quote and this is the new quote. So QPH, back when we brought this up when I first started here and we presented, me and Steve had talked about it and presented it with you guys. His quote back then was ninety-nine thousand.
Okay.
What he's done is he just has went through and I'm guessing he just missed that date.
Now, the way, the way I read that, all they're going to do is take the concrete out, fix the collapsed drain that's under.
Yes.
This is where, this is the kitchen in the high school, there's a, the drain issue in there, so we're just, that's what we're talking about.
Detrimental to use cast iron in there, I know that's what's in there, but I guess my question is, if they go to PVC, it's going to be a. Quite a bit cheaper, just like on the floor drains and whatnot.
Yeah, why are they using ductile?
And I know that's what's in there, is that, that's not by.
I'd have to go look at the other quote for Benchmark and then.
Can you give me a reason that there's not a weight bearing and if you're putting concrete on top of it?
I don't know what.
It was like the, when they did the office at the elementary, I inspected, it went in there and they did ductile iron with the bang clamp, which I thought was just asinine. It's like, you know, you could have done it in PVC for a lot cheaper, quicker. And I mean, if it's an option and we can do it, I didn't.
I mean, I can come, I can go back to him with an option of PVC instead of ductile, that's not a problem, the biggest issue is.
What?
This is a seven week project.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're prepared to say go, we just want to see if we can get deeper.
We would like for you to be.
I could call both of them up tomorrow and say, hey, send me this and, or give me a reason why you're saying that's for ductile.
We got to see if it's code.
I do know, in my sixteen years of experience, in schools I've never used ductile.
Yeah, so I.
Or, sorry, not, we've never used PVC.
Yeah.
It's always ductile on the road.
So is there a code, you think, for that reason?
There's a very good possibility.
Well, I, I mean, this is the crazy part, it's like, okay, if they're wanting you to do that, it's like. I did eight miles of water mains, they're all C nine hundred plastic.
Yeah.
Okay, and it was ductile, you know, if I go in and I change anything with the sewer, I go to plastic. Plastic rated more PSI, like you said, it's more compression strength, it's easier to work with.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I hundred percent agree, if, if we can get the prices out by going PVC and it's up the coast, yeah.
So I think that's just what we're at.
Yeah, we, we want you to, yeah.
If we can save money, we want to save money.
I think we're going to probably say go.
Okay, so.
The caveat that it's not going to exceed our.
The original bill.
It's not, I mean, a hundred percent, well, just so everybody's under the same thing, when Benchmark originally quoted this. Their quote was like a hundred and two thousand dollars a year ago. When QPH originally quoted this, their quote was ninety, ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Flipped spots.
They flipped spots. The difference is, is Benchmark, looking through this quote, Benchmark has. Allowed for the twenty thousand that we did last year. So I'd have to go back and find it, but their, or QPH, their number, we did twenty thousand on the last year with QPH, because they were the lower number last year. But then their prices went up.
No, when they talk about everything but under the freezers, is, I take it the main goes out to that manhole and it goes under the freezer?
Yeah, there's this, there's one drain line that cuts from where the food line is, under the freezers and ties into what we've already replaced. What we did, because we can't tear those freezers out in this amount of time, what we did is we just tied it back in, that drain line is not used for anything, but it is a drain. So we just tied it back into the new drain line and instead of replacing it, they just both of them excluded.
And that's just what's in the building?
Yes, there's a hundred, a hundred and eighty feet from where we ended last year.
What about outside the building?
It's already been done, that was part of, so from the manhole into, you guys know where the kitchen door is, door fifteen.
Yeah.
Inside kitchen door, just past the freezers where the floor turns to tile, is where we stopped.
Was that all ductile out there?
That was all, some of it was clay. Like, we ran into like six feet from the manhole.
Oh, no, it's all, it's from my, from my sewer mains running up to, they tied on, it's all clay tile, I know, that's why I just spent a million bucks.
What they did is they, they put all ductile back, that, it was clay, there was six feet over that was clay, the rest was ductile, they removed all of it, replaced all of it with ductile.
So what do you want to move forward with?
I want to move forward with Benchmark.
Okay.
One, one of it is because Benchmark is going to protect all the equipment. Benchmark has also gave, this is where QPH told me if I need help moving equipment out of there, then there will be a price for that.
I've seen that.
Benchmark told me. No, Benchmark told me that they would just come in and do it for a T and M and give it and help us out. So to me, a T and M is always going to be cheaper than.
Do we want to do that separate as a?
Yeah, we just vote on that right now.
I'll make a motion that we take Benchmark and we give Chris the liberty of seeing if we can lessen it with PVC instead of ductile, if it can be done.
Okay, that's motion second.
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Just make, just make sure we're still in code, I know you will, that's, that's ultimately.
I mean, neither, neither company's allowed to install with this stuff.
But you might let us know why, just so we can, we can learn, I don't know why there had to be ductile inside the building.
It's learning for me too, so.
Are you going to say that Josh is putting something underneath the road or David, when we're driving over with eighty thousand pound semi, it's a.
It sure has something to do with code.
But if you're replacing it, you're not, but you're like new, yes, I knew.
Well, is he inside David on that, why would they put, why would they require ductile on site?
I, I don't know.
It's money, that's what I think, it's money.
I would be, plastic.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah. My guess is everything was through a state design. When it's building, it was built, it was a state design and that's probably what they're for.
Engineers got more money.
But whether, whether from the sixties when this was built to now has changed, I don't know. My guess is they, they quoted it because they know they pulled ductile out, I'm guessing that's why they.
Yeah, put it back in, yeah. All right, um.
Is there anything we need to identify on the mall that thinks?
Well, we just go ahead and, and authorize, um, I entertain a motion to authorize the go ahead for mall designing to go with their preliminary of seventy-five hundred and we'll go from there. All in favor?
All right.
So we'll let Mall of Design take over, come back with their.
Started a good start.
Any, any other questions on the consent agenda that? Yeah. All right, well, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. You got your summer help, there you go.
There's a whole bunch.
Sure.
What's your top two, top three?
Top three.
Top three for those guys, just to give me a top three.
I mean, the, the pool's a big one.
What are you doing in the pool?
It's getting to put, so every three years that pool's supposed to be drained to put the scrub.
Oh, that'd be fun.
In the middle of season this year, we lost our pool lights, but I can't touch them because it's still full of water.
Yeah.
So as soon as the swimming thing is done, June nineteenth, the pool would drain, we're going in scrubbing everything, pulling lights out, fixing all the lights.
So who will work number two? Painting?
Yeah, painting, I mean, there's just a ton of.
All right.
Curves. Curves.
Curves.
Yeah, trying to get the outs, I mean, cleaning the outside up, trimming trees, would he get the trees trimmed back off the elementary because they're blocking cameras and.
Very good.
Cleaning rubs, there's a bunch.
No one can call it after that.
All right, so no donations and now we'll move to public comment. If anybody has anything to share, if you would, stand up, introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Joshua Dami, uh, county surveyor, but somehow I got, I mean, they broke into help with the junior high softball field, uh, over at Galveston. And the question I got were, we got the line man, we got everything, we got tiled, uh, we did get the fence all donated, uh, it's starting in two weeks. And I talked to Dr. Dautry, the problem we're, we kind of got, and I'm seeing for next year, in case we don't want to go this route, transportation over there after school. You know, when I was in school, we went to the golf course, they, they transport some bus. And now they, the buses are full and they can't get there, if that's a problem, do we need to cancel doing the field there and move it to Lewis Cass? Instead of putting twenty-eight or one thirty-five thousand dollars, we got the fence coming? I'm just asking, before we do this, there's a problem.
So make sure I understand, then the, the objective would be after school on a bus, already going to Galveston. Players playing junior high softball would hop on this bus where there's already room.
Yes.
Do we know, do we know that there's room, and I know we're not talking about this year, but I, I don't know the capacity.
Sherry said there's some room, I talked to Sherry, some, sometimes there's not, it's just hard, depends on how many, and it goes, goes to coach, you know, one coach might want a five o'clock practice, but. I don't, I mean, when I first talked to Marshawn, you know, we asked about building Lewis Cass behind in that FFA block and he wanted Galveston, well. We spent all this money and we can't have it right after school. We shouldn't, should build it at Lewis Cass, I guess.
If you can't, if you got a five o'clock, they still have to go home and come back, I mean, either way, they're going to be moving one way or the other, probably. It's just whether it's a free trip over there, we could get home, so, does Junior and I have practice right after school every single day?
Yes.
Okay. So I, yeah, it's really going to be up to Dr. Dautry to come up with something, I don't know that we have a policy against it, but I don't know we have a policy for it either, so.
I mean, it's not, it's not typical, uh, most schools don't do it, I'm not saying that we can't do it. A lot of it's going to get, be, get Sherry enough time to actually be able to see logistically, can it be done? And then like he said, it might not be an issue depending on what happens coaching wise, it might have a coach that says I want to practice at five or five-thirty and then we're just back to the.
Yeah.
Way of doing things. The other piece I think is important is it could bounce back the other way too with the junior high baseball program. If something changes there, they might be in the same boat, which then you go from twenty-two kids to maybe you need forty-some kids on a bus, which obviously changes the load level, so. Now that we're aware of it, I don't know that it's something that Sherry couldn't try to plan for if she had the ability to do it, it's just a lot of moving parts to it as far as that goes.
We're not talking about this year, we're talking about for next year, yeah.
I'm just thinking of the fence, so as you know, all you guys driving the county, the roads are, South, North Town are horrible because of this over. Well, they did donate, what we get from them, they, close to forty thousand, thirty-five thousand from them for this project. And, uh, then they finally said, well, probably two weeks ago, get the fence, they ordered the fence and they're going to pay for it to be installed. So, so they are doing that and then we had, uh, Merrill Brothers did the tile work for us. One, like, as a county surveyor, I have a lot of contractors, one of the contractors donated all the tile. And then, uh, we had the line donated between Andersons and, uh, who else, well. IMI. IMI did it and then Brad Sparks, everybody donated it, so we got up close to sixty thousand dollars in it. But before we built the fence, if there's going to be an issue, it's like, why spend the money there if not?
Why, I don't know, I'd let transportation be an issue, it just has to fit into the whole grand scheme of everything, especially with all the investment you already have into it, so, is it looking good?
Oh, I think it is, I mean, yeah.
Have they been using it this year?
Well, we haven't because of some issues, but we're ready to, I mean, some junior high are not, well, younger kids have been using it, but.
Will it use the summer for anything since?
I think it's anybody over there, but, but, you know, it's junior high, youth league might use it.
For something, yeah. I think it's still, you know, the, and the best method will be used, you know, regardless of the transportation issue, so it's a winning combination, I'm not saying in five years they'll have another one here at the high school.
Yeah.
If the program grows, so, will you take a look at it?
Let Dr. Dautry.
I just want to get it addressed, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And Sherry has been working midnight, I've talked to her a couple of times and nothing against Sherry, so.
And thanks for both your efforts in getting all that stuff donated, that's impressive, thank you.
So if we want to build another one, you guys interested over here? So I check.
Well, there's no tree there, I know.
Looking for donations for piping.
Well, funny thing is, me and Dave cut a cat kitchen, about five loads of lines going to get it. About five loads in, we're calling to find that, who's going to donate, because we are way off.
Oh, I saw you didn't come close, because I did the girls down there in Galveston and converted it from a boy and I went through, well, engineering donated all, it was, it was a lot.
Yeah, I put five loads on the Galveston just to pre top it last year.
Yeah, I don't even remember every load.
Any other, uh, comments? Rick, you got anything you want?
Well, I appreciate everybody coming and, um, you know, the top ten banquet, Don, I thought was nice, I thought everything went well. Yeah, it's just a nice thing that I don't think people realize how nice it is, because if you're not there, you know, but it just needs some recognition, you know what I mean? You know, those kids and families, they definitely enjoy it, so, that's about it.
Um, I just, I think I wanted to point out, I don't know how many people know about that, the Bass Club that they have at the high school and they've won some, uh, you know, tournaments they went to, I just think that's really. Great that we're looking for ways, I hope we continue to do that, that we can get people who aren't in the normal, traditional plugged in parts that they're, we're providing a spot for them and I. Is it Mr. Timmy that does that? I mean, and we've had community support and parent support and I just, I hope we look for more things like that, because I think that's great for those kids to get plugged in. It does stuff like that.
Thanks for the presentations, appreciate all the information, very informative, I'm glad you're taking care of it, because I cannot recite it back to you right now. As we conclude the year, we just also need to be mindful of the positives that we can take out of this year, so. Kids went home safe and we, most of them are going through another year and we tend to focus on the negatives and all the bad stuff and just got to remember that, you know, it was another successful year and. Sometimes our gauge has to change a little bit, but I think it was a great year and so everybody in this room, um, not necessarily in this side of the table, but that side of the table, uh, thank you for that, because it was, it was a great year, so appreciate all the help.
Yeah, thanks for coming and spending all that time answering our questions, I appreciate that and I'm excited, I, I know it's been a lot of work for you guys. But I am excited about the opportunity for the kids, uh, to come out with, uh, college credits, parents will be excited about that, saving them a few dollars. I, I do love all these counseling things, I, like, uh, Ryan said, I don't quite grasp it all, but, uh, enrollment, employment and enlistment and service. I just love that, that we're giving potential opportunities, so thank you for that, I'm excited about what, Mer- Merlet? Who's Merlet is going to bring into, uh, the schools, that's going to be so cool, so, yeah.
Good thing.
I'm just, yeah. Thank you for the hard work you've already put into it and are going to be putting into it.
I, I agree, um, Don, do you have anything you want to add or anything for?
No, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Dautry, anything else?
One thing I highlight is, I thought it was really cool last week, Senior Reality Day, a bunch of kids came through and did interviews out at, I think it was Upper Deer Creek Church and got to sit down to interview kids. And you know what's impressive about that is that, so we saw the top ten banquet and you know those kids are just on it, they're outstanding, they're high flyers. It was really neat in the interview day to get to interview a lot of the kids that aren't in that group, that are looking to go out into the field and do other things. Uh, I think I had three kids that are going to go into welding, I think they're going to be really successful when they go out in the welding and they're going to do really well for themselves, so. Just kind of cool and it was a, it was a really neat organized event and a lot of kids got to take. Just kind of cool and it was a, it was a really neat organized event and a lot of kids got to take advantage of it, so.
Yeah. Done. Yeah, true. I just, thank you for the presentation, thank you for your time and all the effort you put into it. And just thank you all for everything you've done, everybody that's sitting here for this year. I mean, it's just, you know, like, right, so we, kids got home safely, you know, we dug it, got through. And then here, which is just a blow-by, it's insane. So, just looking forward to great, you see, heads and goals and, and things like that, so. Most of the blows, yeah. So, all in favor?
Be careful going home.
So weird, this stuff.
Well, see, Emma's like.
So, pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, it does real well.
And he's always, he's always there and yeah, just a good, good kid. That way it's going out.